Welcome, everybody, to the tenth meeting of the Middleborough Boys' Selectmen. First item on the agenda, unanticipated. Does anybody have anything under unanticipated? Yes?
Yes, Chair.
I just wanted to mention, I witnessed the train down in South Middleborough at the Miller
Street Crossing this weekend twice. Saturday night it was running a little late, Sunday night it was running pretty much on time. What bothered me the most, everything was working fine, the whistle blew, the lights went on, the audio warning went on, the arms came down, but not even two minutes before the train went through at fifty-some odd miles an hour Sunday night, an ATV with two young children on it, kids, came off the rails and, I mean, they literally missed the train by a minute. And having seen that train on Saturday night and Sunday night, it doesn't always run at the exact minute. We were a minute away from obliteration, so anyone who's watching or knows anyone, if it's your kids or if it's you, please, number one, VOT says it's trespassing, it is trespassing, but more importantly, you are risking your life riding the ATVs on the train tracks.
That's it. Thank you. Anybody else? Any announcements?
Mr. Chair. Um, the Middleborough Democratic Town Committee is having a summer cookout on June 29th, Saturday, June 29th, noon to 4:00 p.m. at the Yelts, 24th Ice Street. 12:00 p.m. is a cash bar, shrimp cocktail, cheese platter. 1:00 p.m. program begins and the burgers and dogs are going to be served. It's all-you-can-eat, rain or shine, great door prices. Suggested donation is $20 per person, $30 per couple or family, free to Middleborough senior Democrats. Any further information, you can call George Mosley at (508) 947-3494. I'll be cooking the burgers and dogs. I'm pretty good behind the grill, too.
You know where these burgers and dogs stand from?
Cheapest place we could get, the Democrats. And I'd like to say that, I'd like to say happy birthday to Betty... Bonnie?
Bonnie.
Betty Bonnie, who turned 100 years old this Saturday at the Hannah Shaw Home. And it was, it really was a nice time, and it was great to see her walk into the pot. A hundred years old, she still has, you know, all of her faculties, she's out and about. She says the secret to reaching 100 was spending as much time outdoors as she could. I have a little rear at that, but I'm not quite 100 yet. Some days it feels that way, the little ones. But, yeah, happy birthday to her and can't wait to see you again next year. That's it for me.
Just wanted to let you know, Crazy Days Let Me Know, that they have spaces available for businesses in Middleborough or out of Middleborough to go to the middleboroughonthemove.org website, and you can find out all the information you want there. So I'm just announcing that.
Good. Any other announcements over here? From the crowd, any announcements?
Okay.
I neglected to mention that this meeting is being broadcast on McCann and Horizon and also recorded on Horizon and McCann. Entertainer motion to authorize the chair or as designated to sign warrants for the weekend in six, seven thirteen?
So.
Okay. Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Be no minutes to vote on tonight. We'll be bringing the minutes up on the seventeenth. Okay, new business. Vote to approve a second-hand license for K&amp;M Thrift and Collectibles, Inc. to be located at 52 Centus Street. Do we have anybody from K&amp;M Thrift and Collectibles?
Yes.
Come right up to the microphone, please. Excuse me, your name?
Michael Phelps. My wife, Kathy. And thank you for taking this time and thank you for taking a vote on for our store. We liked to do business here in Middleborough for a long time. We really liked the town.
All right. You're going to have mostly secondhand furniture, housewares?
Yep.
Collectibles?
Yes.
Assorted figurines?
Yep.
Grass ornaments? And household goods?
Yes.
Fine, darling?
Yes.
And your hours of operation are going to be Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Okay. No taxes due? Pleasure of board. Any motions approved?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Welcome and good luck.
Thanks.
Next order of business will be vote to approve the use of town roads for the MS Ride the Road event on 622 and 623, 2013. We have no objections from the police or fire chief, just to be cautious that the roads they will be using are heavily traveled. Who's had this happen year after year?
For years.
Any comments or questions?
Just recently, it's been, I believe, the pleasure of the board to include making sure trash is taken care of.
Yes. Send that message to you. Okay, you all set there, Glenn? All right. Anybody else? Pleasure of the board. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve this with the caveat that we send them a note to make sure that they police up their area afterwards. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We have Eagle Scout did a, an improvement project down at the Middleborough Dog Shelter. Is there anybody here to talk about the dog shelter? Is the Eagle Scout here? And that would be Justin Wilbur. Is he here? No? Okay, we are going to send him a letter of thanks for this. Gene Squalding sent through a little note that, given the history of the dog shelter itself, dog shelters are not a place where you can always spend a lot of town money, even though they need it, they don't always get it, so they get a lot of outside help. I think one of our friends did some work on the dog shelter, if I'm not mistaken, did a roof on it. And now we have this gentleman did his Eagle Scout project down there, so I think it would be a pleasure of the board on this. So let me read the citation. "On behalf of the citizens of Middleborough, we extend our sincere appreciation to you for choosing to repair and improve upon the condition of the town of Middleborough Animal Shelter as your Eagle Project. It is our understanding that you contribute many hours to work on this, to working on this project, and commend you for your dedication and hard work. Thank you for your positive contribution on behalf of the community of Middleborough." Signed by the Board of Selectmen. Should we choose to vote on this? We have a motion.
A motion that we send a letter of thanks to Justin Wilbur for his Eagle Scout project improving the Middleborough Dog Shelter.
Second. And we have a second. Any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We'll send that letter out. Next, we have a vote to award the SER SG Water and Sewer Treatment Chemical IFB contracts to the bidders as presented. The bids are for the chemicals used in the treatment plant: potassium hydroxide, sodium, whatever that is, hexylmethylphosphate, liquid ferrocloryde, sodium bisulfate, sodium hypochlorate, and polymers. The estimated total value of this is $223,973.2. This has all been researched thoroughly, and this is the best price we can get for these wonderful little chemicals. It is to keep our sewer treatment plant running so well. Okay, pleasure of the board. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Is there a room to get to now? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Want to shift down to Town Manager Record?
Well, yes. Good time.
I've got a lot to say, but...
No, you gotta drag it out. These are big words.
We can do correspondence after this as well. Just a couple of things. We did get a notification of our Chapter 90 award. However, it's only half of what the legislature is intended to give us, releasing $150 million for fiscal year 2014. As we know, the governor and the legislature are debating various items, and it looks like Chapter 90 is being held hostage for that discussion. So it'll give us some money to work with, but it'd be nice to have the rest of it. The second item is the letter that council has sent to the Traceys regarding your zoning violations, and depending on how they respond, our next step will be to go into court. And you saw my, well, let's see, it's like the entire email didn't get in here, but I requested the risk analysis from the MBTA regarding the K Fire Service, and the email I got back said that they wouldn't give it to us. So I think we're gonna have to ask our legislature.
Excuse me, they couldn't give it to us?
They wouldn't give us.
Wouldn't give it to us?
They wouldn't.
They wouldn't give us the risk assessment of their train coming through our town.
That's right. That's right. So I know Rochester has asked their rep to request that. I think we'll ask our reps to request it as well.
We have, yeah, we have three.
We have three, and so we'll ask them for it.
I have been in contact with all three reps regarding this issue, and Ms. Gifford is aware, well, she's not aware of this, but she was going to try to make it down over the weekend to see the trains going through. But, so she's aware of the issue that we have with it, so we'll certainly be in touch with her office and ask for, and she can help get us the risk assessment.
That's what we'll do. And then we have a van bus driver position open. It's been posted, it's on the website. And the last thing is the appeal letter that went to FEMA from MIMA requesting reimbursement for the storm-related costs for the blizzard back in February. As you recall, they, they will reimburse us for the emergency-related costs, but they declined to reimburse us for the snow-related costs because I believe the snow was .6 inches too little for FEMA to consider for reimbursement. So however, MIMA is asking them to reconsider, and that's what that letter is about.
Probably not something we should get into because, I mean, as far as, I haven't called people yet, but it does seem rather...
Did you say .6?
.6.
So less than a half an inch, or just over a half inch?
Yeah.
You couldn't measure it in a different spot?
That's what I would have done.
Well, don't forget that we had all that rain with it, so it, you know, there were pots, there were pots of the storm where it was raining when there was a storm, so it caved it all down. It's money. And that's all I got.
It's all right.
That's it?
That's all.
Well, let's get on over to the correspondence. We have to wait till 7:25. Gives us about nine minutes.
Can we talk about that risk assessment analysis and not getting there?
I don't see that there's any way I can stop you from getting there. This is not heavy enough. Okay, Mr. Gold?
Yes. Item six kind of follows up on what Charlie was saying. Very disappointed to see that the governor is not releasing the full $300 million for Chapter 90. That's money for our roads, and because no one wanted to vote for his humongous tax increase, he's holding that money hostage, and that's just very disappointing. That's all I want to say.
That's it?
That's it. That's my feelings.
So we're going to hold them back. Mr. Quell?
Well, we're on the subject just so we can, you know, what worst-case scenario through here, Charlie, you know, what can be the worst for this town if these numbers are as bad as they could be? And what's our, what's our course of action?
No, the only, you know, in all truthfulness, we didn't expect to get the additional money this year. So, you know, we could, we'd be hard-pressed to go out and program that money, but the trouble is, you know, without it, we, you know, it sort of puts a damper on even doing that. So, I mean, we have a number of projects that we're planning to do this summer already with the, you know, the anticipated amount, amount they are going to release, but, you know. So it's not, it's not like we were planning on $300 million, we had all these things ready to go, and now we have to cut it in half. You know, this was something that we, you know, we weren't sure it was going to happen, so we did not, you know, take any action to get it ready to go.
Another good reason to budget conservatively.
Right.
Yeah, so, okay. And, you know, we always make the point, if I can get down to it, to announce the job postings, there's one for the COA. If anybody gets there before I do, go ahead and read it and scroll as fast as I can.
We'll let you scroll along.
Scroll along, and I'll find a compact.
Good time, man.
I just got to get past all the governor's disappointing budgeting.
There's got to be a way to ease it in, I understand.
I know. Do I pass it? Oh, I think it's right here. Job posting for, if I could, for a description of the job is a van slash bus driver. They'll work under the supervision of the dispatcher on duty, transports elderly and disabled persons, and Council on Aging volunteers on getup. That stands for Greater Attleboro and Taunton Regional Transit Authority. Duty responsibilities is what it sounds like, provide transportation. Volunteers under some circumstances may transport schoolchildren and other special populations, transports home-delivered meals and other supplies. Let's get down to education qualifications, high school, possession of a Massachusetts commercial driver's license, including an endorsement for the operation of passenger transport vehicles, health status and lifting ability consistent with the need to provide assistance to elderly and disabled persons, willingness to undergo a vision test and examination by a licensed physician at a time of hiring, willingness to undergo random drug and alcohol screening tests, CPR and first aid certification, or willingness to obtain this as a condition of hiring, willingness to work scheduled overtime, evening, weekends, holiday hours, if in the judgment of the executive director, such as assignments are needed, ability to relate well to elderly people, maturity of judgment, strong desire to function as a member of a team, good sense of humor, willingness to work long in regular hours. The posting will close on June 14th pursuant to federal regulations. Town of Middleborough does not discriminate on the basis of handicap status. And I'm not getting pay on this. Anybody see a pay on that? An hourly pay or anything? I don't see one. Maybe it was up the top? Okay, well, I don't see what the, what the pay per hour is on that. But if you have a CDL, as they call it, a CDL driver's license, and you have a passenger endorsement, might be something you can look into. If not on a full-time, maybe even on a part-time basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quell. Mr. Quell?
Just have one. It's from Taunton River Watershed Alliance. They're unveiling a Taunton River Trail kiosk at the Sweet Snolls State Park in Dayton at 10:00 a.m. The Taunton River Trail is an on-road bike road and off-road bike path that will eventually extend from the city of Fall River to the city of Taunton. In addition to the creation of the bikeway, the trail initiative will include efforts to preserve an extensive greenway along the Taunton River and to interpret the river's rich human ecological history. Please join us for several events to initiate this project on Saturday morning, June 15th. All of the events are free and open to the public. So that sounds like a pretty neat thing once it's completed. A bike path from the city of Fall River to the city of Taunton. I'm hopping down that river all the time, it's a...
Are they going along into the river, did you say?
I'm not sure where they're going. But if they, it says it's the Taunton River Trail, so I imagine it's going to get some closer proximity to it.
Makes sense.
So it's a beautiful, beautiful garden, and it sounds like a neat thing, and who knows, maybe one day it'll extend a little bit farther down the road. So that's it for me.
Charlie, on item number two, this is Mr. Peck, Christopher Peck, our DPW Director. His authorization to sign letters. Do we have to do anything with that?
No, no, it's just your information.
Okay. Okay. 7:25. This time...
Great for hearing, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes.
May I say something? My name's Brian Zimbelo. I just wanted to give a, if I might, if I might just give a shout-out to the Middleborough Boys' Baseball Team who yesterday defeated Abington in Burnetree with a score 6 to 1, which, which netted them the Eastern, South Regional Division III title. They're playing tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 in Lowell for the Eastern Mass title, MIAA title. The girls' softball team didn't fare as well. They did make the tournament, won their first, first round, but next year's another year for the, for the girls, and they're going to get stronger next year. But the boys, I just want to give a shout-out to both teams, especially, I saw the trophy at the Central yesterday as I'm walking in, because I was at a recital and I missed the game up in Burnetree. But tomorrow, if anyone's, has time to go to Lowell for 4:00, the game is scheduled, if the very holds out, but just going to have one. Thank you.
So you were at a recital at the Central?
Yeah, for the recital. People want to see that recital.
You're only certain things I have to worry about. That's not high on the list. 7:25.
Mr. Chair, may I add one for the announcement?
Yes, sir.
The Namaska River Stewardship Project, the day one of the river cleanup is going to be on June 15th at 8:00 a.m. They're going to meet at Alden Mill Park, and they're going to go from there and start picking up a section of the river, cleaning it up a little bit. If you need a canoe or anything like that, you should get in touch with Dan Badger at Badger Base Camp, badgerbasecamp.com or badgerwildersguides.org. And, so, yeah, that'll be on the 15th, which I believe is Saturday, right?
Yes.
All right, so this Saturday. If my wife lets me, I'll be there.
There you go. You need a note?
I may.
Okay, we have at 7:25 Conservation Agent Patricia Cassidy is going to review the land protection project, and we're going to presumably vote to support the conservation restriction on Pine Street.
Good evening.
Patricia, good evening.
I had forwarded to Jackie to forward to all of you the information, so I'm hoping that you reviewed it over the weekend. I think I included maps of the property, and there was an original conservation restriction, and then it was sent to the state, to Irene Delbono, and she reviewed it and marked it up. Dan Murray just had one minor comment about if the property was taken out of conservation, which, you know, we're thinking it's not ever going to, that's never going to happen. Just that it'd be more in line with the statute for disposing of property, but other than that, everything else, you know, is fine. Let's see, so the state, you know, came back with their comments. It's about 30 acres, including two parcels. That was, is going from the Sanford family to the Rod and Gun Club, and then the Conservation Commission and the Buzzards Bay Coalition are going to co-hold the conservation restriction. So...
Will the gun club be able to still use that land, or...
Yeah. And there, this is just one part of kind of a phased conservation project. In total, there'll be hopefully 300 acres that then will connect to the Rocky Gutter Wildlife Management Area. So there's more, more, you know, conservation to come. This is just one piece of it. And this is at no cost to the town. There's a Conservation Partnership grant that is being awarded to help pay for this, and I think there was another grant as well. So I want to have Mr. Decker here from the Buzzards Bay Coalition and Mr. Perkins from the Rod and Gun Club. So if you have any questions for them, give me questions for me.
This is a restriction that will be forever?
Right, in perpetuity.
Is there any way somebody can get out of that restriction?
They would, it would be under Article 97, which, if they wanted to take it out of conservation, they would have to go through the legislative process, and they have to have an equal amount of property to swap. There, there has to be like a no-net loss of conservation land once you have a piece in Article 97.
More notes?
Tricia, off the top of your head, you don't happen to know how big Rocky Gutter is, do you?
It's a little over 3,000 acres.
It's a pretty good-sized piece, right?
It is, yes. It's one of our larger wildlife management areas. Yeah.
I think it's one of five.
Yes.
And this is 300 acres, and you're going to work on a 30?
Well, this is 30, this restriction tonight that we're presenting to you. And then there's going to, Buzzards Bay Coalition is going to be working on some other pieces, and I think with Fish and Wildlife as well.
So this, this is a pretty large corridor.
Yeah.
All, all the posses and contiguous, and that's, that's the key word right there for conservation, right?
Having it be contiguous, so you have wildlife corridors, so you have, you know...
Sounds good to me.
More protection.
I appreciate your work. And this is through the Mass Buzzards Bay Coalition because it's actually draining into the Buzzards Bay watershed, correct?
That's right, yes. This is, you know, eventually the Wee Wee Antic River.
Yep.
And, yeah, to Buzzards Bay. So like that southern, southeastern portion of the town is in not only the Buzzards Bay watershed, but it's also part of the Plymouth Carver Aquifer. So it's nice to work with them because, you know, we're mostly in the Taunton watershed. So, I mean, they've been phenomenal to work with.
Tricia, because you received a grant for this, the Massachusetts Historical Commission has to review it. Where are you with that? Have they finished that yet?
They, Mr. Decker can maybe explain a little bit more, but they did receive a letter from Mass Historic, and they didn't find any major concerns. I think, I think we had some language in there. You want to speak to that? Yeah.
Mr. Decker, would you please?
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Alan Decker. I'm the Director of Land Protection
I'm the Director of the Land Protection Program for Buzzards Bay Coalition. And first off, let me just say I'm very pleased to be here and working with Tricia on this project. We don't have a whole lot of area in the town of Middleborough which we can work on, but this is certainly in that watershed and we're very pleased to be here this evening. To address your specific question concerning the Mass Historical comments, yes, we applied for a state conservation partnership grant through the Department of Environment, Energy and Environmental Affairs. That grant was awarded and hence the town connection requires that the town co-host the conservation restriction. Because of the grant, Mass Historical was given an opportunity to review the project site and provide comment if they felt it necessary. What they did provide was, first of all, that none of the property, the subject of this conservation project, is in the database that they maintain of historical or archaeologically important sites. So, they recommended that any projects that involve digging, which is their primary concern, any activities that the Gun Club holds the reserved rights for that involved any, they be involved in consultation on that. It's merely a recommendation and we're gonna make the Gun Club, and obviously the town got a copy of the letter, but make them aware of that. But the copy of the conservation restriction that you were probably provided had language in there. We took a conservative route because I was in front of the Conservation Commission last Thursday and we had not heard until Thursday of the meeting, the interpretation from Mass Historical. So, we had that language in there. The final product will actually not have that language in there since there was no inventory, asset inventory that applied to this particular project. And in fact, the Gun Club is not reserving any archaeological activity reserved right. So, it's not actually in the restriction itself. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yep. So, the Gun Club will still be able to, it won't impact any of their activities?
That's correct. That's our understanding of what the Gun Club is interested in doing on the property, which effectively is nothing more than is actually currently happening on it right now, which is to say it's wildlife corridor and wildlife habitat right now. Property's not owned by the Gun Club, but the larger aspect of this project, the ownership of that 30 acres comes into the Gun Club from the private-party seller, of which we're sort of putting it all together, if you will.
So, who will own the property?
So, the property will be owned by the Long Pinko Rod and Gun Club.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Questions from the audience? Hearing done. Entertained a motion, if I could say it.
Thank you, motion that we approved the land protection project and vote to support the conservation restriction on Pine Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Wonderful. Mr. Chair, at this time, if you don't mind, I checked with Tricia and she said that this would be acceptable. I'd like to offer up a signature page for you to sign at this time. I have a notary and I'm happy to then notarize it and I'll be done with you and you'll be done with me, so to speak. I don't have to come to the town clerk's office.
Certainly.
Fantastic.
You'd love to have you sign. Witness that I sign, would you?
I would be happy to do so.
As me.
Understood.
Did the Buzzards Bay have their swim race yet this year?
We've not. This is a great opportunity. I greatly appreciate it. This is a great opportunity for you, for me to speak about that. We have not. It is the second Saturday in July, I believe. We're more than happy to have registrants from the town of Middleborough come down and swim across the bay. In this case, it's swimming from Davies Locker in the city of Big Bedford. Thank you, sir. Across the harbor to Fort Phoenix in Fairhaven. It's 1.2 open-water swim. We're actively seeking for swimmers. We have a goal of 350. Sounds like you know about it. Come on down.
You gotta get back in the pool before I swim.
Well, you got time. You got time. It's a great, it's a great event. It's one of our big, it's a fundraiser for us and it goes well and it gives folks an opportunity to actually interact with the bay, which is what we're concerned with every day of our own working lives and non-working lives, as it were. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to that. Great. Thank you very much.
Charlie, do we need to get a copy of that letter?
I'm sure we can get it. Absolutely. I'm happy to. I will PDF it to Tricia tomorrow morning after I notarize it and look forward to be back in front of you in short order on the second prong of this overall project.
We'll be here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Next item on the agenda, 7:30 meeting. And this is the continuation of a hearing